Okay, we'll start out with public comments. Is anyone here that would like to make public comments? Please come forward.
Yeah, I have some questions about the Maiden Lane Congress Street project. I think I may have had a misunderstanding from what I read in the paper, but my impression, we live, our driveway, our only access to our property is directly opposite the middle of that block. And so we're trying to figure out how it's going to affect us. And it sounds to me, from what I read in the paper, like there's going to be double the occupancy, double the residency in the new project of what was in that apartment building that is existing now. And plus, there's going to be the school there. And we're kind of wondering, where is the access to parking? Where do people come in and where do people exit? Because we already have been concerned about the project that was built to replace the Owl's Club. Of course, it was never occupied, so we haven't had any challenges there. But, you know, if that were fully occupied, that would be a representative significant uptick in traffic on Maiden Lane. And when you add these two projects, well, this one complex project to that, this could make it very challenging to get into our property. And we share the driveway with our next-door neighbor, which is an apartment complex already. So it's, there are multiple people having to access that driveway as their only driveway. So I'm kind of wondering, was I, am I correct in what I read, that it's going to double the occupancy there? The residential occupancy, that is?
So why don't I get together with, set up a meeting with you and I and the development team, and we can walk you through the site plan?
I would very much appreciate that.
So, you know, that's an invitation. I think we can give you a lot of that information. We'll walk you through the site plan. We're in the process of setting up a lot of those meetings with stakeholders around the property. The site plan has been getting fine-tuned a lot, and so we're, we want to be sure we have the right information when we initiate this conversation.
I understand that.
Nonetheless, one of the key points I would leave you with, I think that would increase your comfort, is all of the new buildings have parking underneath.
Yes, I understand that. I just wondered where the access is.
Yeah, so we'll show you where the access is. We'll walk you through all of that. But, you know, so it's not just looking at the parking that's there. And so really, in terms of, it's an analysis of not so much how many units are increasing, but what's the relationship between the number of units and the parking? So we can walk.
And you anticipate the number of students who will be accessing the building in the times and things like that as well?
Yep.
Yes, I appreciate having that meeting. Thank you.
Sure. So I also share that the new building that replaced the Owl's Club is half-full.
Pardon me?
The existing building is half-full.
Half-full, it's only got one occupant?
No, it's got two now.
Oh, what is the other occupant?
It's a medicine, or, you know, what's the proper word? Or not organic medicine, but...
Only a half.
Only a half, thank you. So they're on the other half of the upper floor, so what's left is a downstairs floor right now.
I see. Okay, I didn't think, last time I looked, there was only one.
No, it just happened recently.
I see. All right.
Any other public comments? During them, I'd like to tend to that.
I'd like to just make a comment. It was initially with surprise and great disappointment that I learned that the Kingman Street Classic was not going to happen this year. Ultimately, I did really blame Kathy Mannahan for not wanting to put it on again. I don't think she gets enough recognition for the work she does on that project. For the past several years, that event, it brought many people to San Oliver's and coupled with the farmer's market, put a lot of money into this economy. To my great surprise, I received a letter a couple days ago after I called her and spoke to her about it, that she is going to have it now. And I hope that the city will do whatever they can, and I know I will, to support that, make available any resources that we have, so we can continue to support that operation. For someone like her, who puts that type of time and effort into that, and also was the initial spark that prompted the saving of the ladies, that ignited that spark with Rotary. She gets very little recognition for the stuff that, some of the stuff that she does. It always seems it's the other way around. So I would just hope that in the future, that we recognize people who bring those types of events to the city of San Oliver's, because I think the downtown area and the city itself is a much richer community with those types of events. And I'll thank her right now for the work that she's done over the past several years on the Kingman Street Classic.
Thank you, Tim. I would totally agree with you. She also did that miniature golf course event, which drew people to the downtown as well. But thank you for bringing that to the hour.
Any other public comment? So we'll move on to item number four. Consider adoption of FY '19 water wastewater stormwater relief question.
The finance and management team met with the finance committee a week or so ago to review the proposed budgets. We've got three budgets and three fees, one for water, one for wastewater, and one for stormwater. They're summarized on the cover sheet. You can just bring it to life a little bit with a little bit of context. The top chart has water and wastewater rates combined, which is how much people experience it on their water bill, and divided between users as 25,000 and 10,000 gallons per quarter. On bottom, rates are broken out between water and sewer on a per 100 gallon basis. There's a stormwater equivalent residential unit, which remains at $2.50 per month, or $7.50 a quarter. So the average user, which is 25,000 per quarter, would see the combined water and sewer bill increase by 4% to $12.31 per quarter. The additional $7.50 for the stormwater utility is then added on top of that. The line share of the increase on the wastewater side, which is at 6%, water, however, is less than one. Within wastewater, there's two main drivers. The main driver is the additional $71,000 that's necessary to build capacity to service the debt on the upgrade. That debt service is scheduled to begin in FY '21, so we're continuing to inch our way up year after year. We've also proposed a new operator position, which is divided equally between the water and wastewater fronts. In recent years, we've learned we've eliminated too many staff from the water and wastewater treatment plants. Plants operate, as you know, 24/7, and during intense weather events, we just don't have enough hands on deck. So this additional operator is pretty key to ensuring the safety that we need in the plants and also helping with staff retention efforts and keeping the workload manageable with a reasonable amount of overtime. So those two additions account for the increase in the salary items and the process of the plants. Other priorities of the council, which is funding a stabilization fund, reserving allocation fees, and having a strong CIP all the way in tact, just as previous years. There's been no change to the stormwater budget from what was approved by the council during the general fund budgeting process. Tim, anything you with any...
All I can say, what I've said before, is the value of being able to turn that faucet on and know that there's going to be water coming out of that thing, or flushing the toilet, or something's going to go down the drain, or being able to call city personnel when something goes wrong, is priceless. And I know I have a development in the town. It's $250 a year just to have someone come to do the required inspection by the state of Vermont for each household that's in the development, way under what this cost is. We remain mindful of people on fixed incomes, and we always have that in our mind when we're coming up with these budgets. But again, this is an extremely reasonable budget. Kind of ran with the skeleton crew the last couple of years, but we're hoping to remedy that and keep some people around. I think it's a very modest increase.
I just want to say that, you know, the last couple of weeks, what we've read in the paper and seen on the news about what's happening in Burlington, I think we're doing our fair share, trying to clean up to make sure things like this are not hotting in the bay, and doing our best to do our part, so I'm glad we're doing that.
Any other comments?
No. Excuse me, can I make a motion to accept the water wastewater stormwater relief budget?
Second. That's made by Tim, second by Chad. And on the discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved.
Mayor, can I just back up a second?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I probably said that too quickly. I didn't know if there was any public comment at all.
Here we go.
Good timing, then.
Motion passes. So we'll reset for electric control briefly. So moved.
Second.
Everybody like that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Curry, if you want to step up.
I think you told me it was going to be one minute today, so we're going to...
Oh, literally one minute.
Go ahead.
So we just have one violation, and I do apologize for the template error on the agenda, but we just have one, Regulation 3B, expired employee certificate, good stuff. And that, so it's a general education regulation, and that was it. I received it, they received it. I don't have anything else on it. It's with the report. Look at it.
So this was, if I got this right, they came in for a routine inspection. The good stuff employee did not sell, so pat on the back, then all of a sudden, John Sennobar says, "Where's your certificate?" And it had expired.
Oh, no.
So, you know, if, there's no good ones of these, because we take this stuff serious, but boy, I'd rather have it go that way than any other way. So they did the job they were supposed to do, they just did not have their training certificate up to date.
Can you clarify, that training certificate's yearly? Two years, every two years?
I believe so.
And I think it's now online.
You can do it online. I think it was, it looked like it was out by about a month, a couple days. And you have, you feel comfortable that it's been addressed? I mean, there's no need to...
I believe so. It was sent to them as well, so.
James, you want to share with us? Thank you for everything. Moving on to item number six. Consider a letter of support for the government's free grant application.
Oh, I'm so sorry, we might need to, may I approve the minutes?
Yep. Minutes of May 14, 2018. So moved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, move to adjourn the electric control. Second. All those in favor, say aye. So we will adjourn the electric control, and we will now pick up the letter of support.
Thank you very much. Going to apply later this month to the Vermont Bike and Pedestrian Program for sidewalk work on Federal Street. It'll pick up where the project left off last year, right around Kingman, in that area. And on the west side, it proposes to construct a sidewalk. Much of that, on the west side, much of that area doesn't have a sidewalk. There are a couple sections that have been constructed. And then there's some old sidewalk that's since been covered by silt and grass. And on the east side, it would reconstruct most of that sidewalk length. It's an older stretch of sidewalk. It is uneven in cases, in some places, but also it's depressed over time, or rather the, the grass on either side has risen over time. So ice becomes a problem in the winter, water becomes an issue during the spring thaw or during a storm. We get a lot of complaints about that sidewalk. Federal Street's on our safe routes to school route, and so it also links many different commercial uses with various different residential areas in that part of the city. So I think it'll score highly for this grant program. And I am writing an application where we try to accomplish all of these goals. Would also include a new curb and potentially some drainage improvements that would be necessary as well. New crosswalk around the area of Hoyt and the Creamery Store. And then there would be another new crosswalk at the top of Aldis on the west side, where the new sidewalk meets the, that little crosswalk that we built across Federal at the top of Aldis. So I think it would be a really good project. It's something that we've been getting a lot of complaints about along the Federal Street corridor, so definitely, I think we need to give this one a shot. The grant would fund 80%, so there's a 20% match, which the city could fulfill from many different places, because there are potential water quality aspects of this project as well with the drainage improvements. And the grant application requires a letter of support from the city council that we are applying for this program, and also that we recognize a 20% match.
Chip, you mentioned curbs. Are you looking at just replacement or an addition?
We're looking at building new curves on the west side where that new sidewalk would go.
So the side would be closer to the road than it is now?
Not necessarily. I think it's mostly because the west side slopes down away from the, from the road. And like I said, we do have drainage issues there. The curb is what would control the water runoff on the street and put it where we want it to go, most likely new catch basins.
Do we have any, because that sidewalk, pretty much, it's either covered or, you know, it's almost nonexistent. There's supposedly a sidewalk underneath there. Do we have any concern with where the sidewalk is in relation to people's garages and in their driveway? Because I know some people probably could park right up to their driveway door, and they, their car may be over the side, the new sidewalk.
Oh, that would be part of the final design phase. We have 60% preliminary plans for this project so far, but in the final design phase, we can start to take a more property-by-property look. It's also an opportunity to bring some order to all those driveways. We've lost a lot of green space on the west side due to parking, and this could help us organize that. And also, many of those property owners and residents are complaining about the drainage issues, so the sidewalk, the greenbelt work, the curb, would help us deal with that. So there'd be a give and take there. And in the end, I think we'd have to look at, we're not going to create a sidewalk that will always be blocked. So on a property-by-property basis, we're going to have to look at where they're going to park their cars.
Well, that's only, that's only what you do, right? We haven't got to worry about anything from Maine, from Lake, all the way to Aldis.
That would be Aldis to Newman.
It's Aldis to Newman's.
Yeah, Aldis to, yeah.
On the west side.
And there's what, probably five residences there?
Five houses, yeah. So I just, I think this is a great idea, I mean, having a sidewalk on the east and west side, all the way from Lake to Newman, I mean, it seems pretty logical. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, council? If none, entertain a motion to approve the letter of support. So moved.
Second.
That was by Kate. Any other comments? During them, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? So moved.
Let's not use this one.
You keep going.
Chip, that's a 20% local, 80% federal.
Yes.
Will you dance up again, Chip? He's here for a while. So we'll move to number seven, resolution to apply for Vermont's tax reallocation.
This is another type of grant program. We applied for this for the Lake Street Streetscape project in the Hampton Inn Hotel. Under this program, when you have a large private development that is closely linked with a municipal project, the state will allow you to have access to the sales tax paid by the contractors on the materials that they use to build the private development. In our case, I think it's everything they pay above $100,000. And that sales tax gets reallocated to the municipal project. So we, what we have in mind is the project across the street. There will be some municipal portions of that project having to do with the parking lots, brownfield mitigation, and other items. And it's all necessary for the private development that will be occurring there. So it's a textbook case for this grant program. We're, we're attempting to compile an application for this year's round. If we don't make it, then we'll, if we can actually try to apply next year, you can actually apply when a project's already underway. But this resolution is necessary to enable the application, so bringing it before you tonight.
Any other questions, Chip? Is there any public comment on this?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion by Tim, is there a second? Second by Marie. Any other conversation? All those in favor, say aye. The opposition, motion passes. We'll move to number eight, Chip. Number of resolutions.
So with our new stormwater ordinance, if you remember, it listed a few documents that the city council can adopt from time to time by resolution. One would be a fee charged to developments that are being regulated for their erosion or for their stormwater management. The second being a stormwater guidance document that can be used to pretty much explain what the standards are going to be for the erosion piece during a construction project. And then the stormwater utility fee credit manual, where we lay out the groundwork for how you could treat stormwater on your property and then seek a credit against your, the stormwater fee that you owe on your property. So to get started on the issue of fees for stormwater regulation, what I'm recommending we do is, attached to your memo, is the fee schedule for our zoning program. And I just added the words "stormwater management," and then next to "building permits," I added "erosion control and stormwater management." So what I'm recommending is that, it's based on this. More often than not, when we are regulating erosion or stormwater management on a property, it's because someone's walked into the permitting office and they're talking today. And when you get a building permit from us for the land use regulations, you already have to pay these fees. And now we'll just be looking at your erosion measures during construction, and we'll be looking at whether your project is so large that you'll have to install stormwater management as part of the project. What I'm suggesting, that we would not add any fees to that mix. If you're coming before us for the land use regs and we're also doing stormwater management, you would just pay the same fees. However, we are going to be regulating erosion and stormwater management on some properties that otherwise would have been exempt from the land development regulations. So they never would have come downstairs and talked to the permitting staff at all. So in that case, I would say, if they're exempt from the land use regulations, we'll just charge them the exact same fees for the erosion and stormwater management pieces. The basis of fees are to recapture some of the staff time spent on the implementation of these regulations, so that it's not all on the general fund. But at the same time, I'm looking for a simplicity to how we do it. We'll just use the same fees, and if you're exempt from permitting, you'll just still pay the same fees, same fees for your erosion and stormwater management conversation that you have with us.
Any questions, Chip? Comments?
Do you ever, when you were reviewing properties, did it ever come to your attention that there may be a problem with a property that would be unmanageable for a property owner, or would be so onerous on the property owner that they wouldn't be able to meet the regulation?
In case of the land development regulations, that does come up once in a while. And what we try to do is find a way to be as much in line with their original vision as possible, but also be in compliance with the regulations. And the regulations give us the options of variances and waivers for certain things.
Is that new construction or existing construction?
Both.
Okay.
Now, in the case of the erosion, the new rules now we have, erosion control and stormwater management, there are feasibility considerations. For instance, especially on the stormwater management side, they don't force you to dig up a brownfield property to infiltrate stormwater. That's anathema of the contamination issue. There's a feasibility chapter in the state stormwater manual, and it's also a consideration of the erosion handbook that people, that I'm suggesting people follow.
Would I be able to, if mine was a property that couldn't come under compliance with the stormwater regulation, be able to apply for credits from another property?
You can do that for your fee, for a credit for your fee. I don't know if you can do that for the, your actual stormwater management. But keep in mind, the only properties where we're going to say, "All right, look, you need to have a stormwater management plan, because you actually have to treat stormwater on your property from here on," only properties that disturb more than an acre. So they're already large enough. The ones more often that we're going to be dealing with are the ones where they're digging up some earth on their property and they trigger the erosion protection during construction. But once construction is done, you know, it's all back to normal for them.
I'm not so worried about those that I am, the existing properties.
Yeah.
And I don't, I couldn't see anything, because I looked at the regulation, I couldn't see anything where it would be problematic for someone to do it, but just because I don't see it doesn't mean it's not there. I just wouldn't want someone to have to be obliged or obligated to have to do something that they were unable to do financially or physically. And that could, if my property was one that could assume additional stormwater measures, would I be able to take on those measures to offset what that person could or could not do on my property?
You know, I think that if we find ourselves in that situation, we could come to the city council to see if there's a regulatory fix. But like you said, I just, I don't see it yet. I don't see it come down the pipe.
I had heard of that, and that's why I brought it up.
Right.
I heard it happening the last couple of weeks, so.
So we have heard of that happening because of a state rule that might come down for large, large sites, larger than what we'll normally be dealing with, that will have to retrofit their sites under a new state rule. And that's something where, for some of the property owners in the city, we might actually be part of that conversation of how can we make that workable for them. But our rules that we'll, we'll be carrying out, I don't see that being an issue.
I didn't see it either.
Chip, can we just go back? You had mentioned a one-acre disturbance. There was discussion of going to a half-acre on the state level, was that? I think we talked about this one before.
You know, the interesting thing about that is, if the state has considered going to a half-acre, I don't know if that rule made it out of Montpelier this time around. The interest, it did? Did not?
Did not.
That would actually affect, that would actually mean we would no longer have to carry out our stormwater management rule, because the state would now be dealing with nearly all of those projects. But yeah, that, there's been no new development on that rule. So, you know, if we did this step by step, you know, the first thing that I'm proposing is the rule on the fees for, for the actual regulation. Any comments from the council on that, or look good?
What's our definition of above-ground pool? Because I see some of those little blow-up ring pools that might be, I don't know, eight or 10 feet across, two feet deep, and they cost a hundred bucks.
I think, I believe if it's two feet deep, I'm not so sure it counts. For the erosion control, it would be depending on how much earth you're digging up to install it. And if you're not digging any earth to install it, then you wouldn't, it would just be regular, dealing with the regular pool rules under our... dealing with the regular pool rules under our land development reg.
And speaking from experience, those pools won't last about three weeks. They weren't meant for you.
I'll make a motion to approve the fee for construction and post-construction stormwater management.
Second?
I'll second.
Second, Michael, thank you. All those in favor? Any one opposed?
I'll make a motion to accept the construction stormwater guidance, guidance document as part of the stormwater regulations.
I'll second.
Second by Tim, second by Michael. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Motion passes.
And I make a motion that the council accept the stormwater utility fee credit manual. That's part of the stormwater regulations.
Second by Michael.
Second.
Second by Michael. Any other conversation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is candidates for the downtown board. We have, had with us tonight Elizabeth Reed and John Kelly. Go on here. You both can come on up here. Elizabeth, yes. So why don't we just start with a quick, those who might be in the audience, a quick bio of both of you, and I'll start with Elizabeth.
All right, so my name's Elizabeth Reed and I am currently serving on the DAB and aside from, where is this, applying to this position on the downtown board. I work locally and my main concern is safety and the IRS.
My name is John Kelly. I live and work in St. Albans as well. And I'm applying for the downtown board. And I'd like to, I define to help, kind of help facilitate growth in the city of downtown.
And your work?
So I work for the St. Albans Messenger.
Okay, well, can I start with you, John? Can you give a reason why you wanted to serve on this board?
So I've grown up in St. Albans and I went to col, I left for college, but I came back because I really liked the direction that St. Albans was going in. I think that there is a bright future for it. And I'd like to help be a part of that and apply some of the education and experience that I've gathered.
I want to help land some really cool events for downtown and get people a little bit more interested. And I come from an art history background, more interested in the, in the design aspect as well as downtown.
And I just want to clarify that there's one full position, there's one on board and one on the position as well. You discussed on a little bit Elizabeth, as to your experiences, but can you elaborate on that a little bit as to your background and?
Yeah, my background. So I come from, I graduated from a creative art college in New Hampshire. And while I was there, I curated galleries and I hosted events for that gallery, single-handedly. I put together a board of people who would, you know, all kinds of backgrounds, design majors, art history majors, creative writers. And together we made this creative arts journal that I curated with them and that we published. So I have a background of kind of hosting art events, art-related events.
I graduated about two years ago from Penn State with a double major in economics and international business. And since then, I've worked on political campaigns, talking to Vermonters, kind of all around the state. A lot of business owners just kind of seeing what the climate was and kind of some of the challenges that they face. And along with working at the St. Albans Messenger, I work with a lot of the downtown businesses and businesses all over the county about, I do ad sales. So I kind of get to talk to them about some of the struggles that they have, along with working with them to find something that works for them.
We can touch on a little bit, elaborate on what your vision for the board would be. Will you make a little more?
Yeah, I think that we could, I, well, I went to the meeting last month and they have some really good plans coming up that I'm really interested in. But yeah, and just, you know, get people into the heart of downtown and really get them out and involved in this community because we've done such a good job at, you know, bringing it back to life.
I would like to bring kind of people downtown and some of the resources that we have, such as Taylor Park and just a really condensed downtown that we have. I think that providing, or planning events like that and getting people just to come downtown would be a really good benefit, just so that with all the attractions that we have, they'd stay downtown and be willing to spend evenings or afternoons, kind of just spending their money locally rather than going out onto the internet or shit and counting.
Does the council have any other questions?
So I'm moved that we accept the recommendation of the downtown board organization committee to appoint John Kelly to the open seat and Elizabeth Reed as an alternate for Trump's retirement, 2031-19.
Second by Chad. Any discussion? I just want to thank you both for being involved. It's nice to see younger people that want to, you know, take the torch and move on, so move us forward.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? So moved. Thank you for coming. We're running a little ahead of schedule. The, Mr. Weinstein here. Shall we bypass that?
I'll make a motion that we skip item number 10 and return when the interest party is here.
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? So moved. So we'll start with the approval of the DMBB loan documents for two million for Sidewalk sidewalks.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Enjoying it? Good, thanks.
These are bond financing documents, which you've approved different versions of these several times in the past year. It's fairly standard documents associated with the, the actual bond itself, the law and the certificate of registration, necessarily related to the legal leads behind the bond. So we're appropriately tax exempt and on with the IRS and meeting all those requirements. So we're seeking council approval for this, for the mayor to sign it and the city corp to sign it where appropriate. And we'll be back in front of you twice in the next 12 months with similar documents for the Tiff project and year three of neighborhood sidewalks. And potentially something else depending what the manager is cooking.
Any questions on this for Tom?
So, Tom, this is just this tranche for the sidewalk?
Just this tranche. We try to work real hard to analyze the cost of just going to our local bank in the short term versus long term. And two million is about our spend rate this summer. And if it was us to move now because the long-term rates are rising a little bit.
Just to go off subject quickly, with the rising of the rates, I think I've, I've been told maybe a couple of times during the coming year, what impact does that have on where we're at with our bonds and other financing?
Nothing dramatic. It's been a slow rise, really slow rise. The bond bank picky pads off the state's credit rating, so they're the highest investment grade rating you can have. So that's the rating we get. Be more, it'd be a bigger impact if the bond bank wasn't in place, but because it is, it's significant. We also get short-term financing through the local banks and those rates have ticked up just a hair, but they're still incredibly favorable. And because we're backed by the city's grand list, far better than the rates you or I would get as a private citizen. So nothing dramatic. You know, if there's a five-year trend, it would be more significant. But when they say rates are rising, we're talking, you know, a quarter percentage point over six months or a year. It's well within the means of the city to handle that.
So you would not see a significant impact of the budgets?
No, we don't see that.
Any comments? Would you like to comment regarding this?
Make a motion to approve the bond, the bond bank loan documents for two million in the sidewalk project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved, thanks, Tom. So we do have, consider approval of special meeting minutes?
Move to approve January 29, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'll abstain over here.
As was I. Chris and Mike and I are abstaining. Motion for 226.
I'll make a motion that we approve minutes for February 26.
Second.
Second by Michael. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain as well. Next, Chad.
Motion approved by 1418.
Second. Any discussion on that? Corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Motion approved warrants 528, last week, 52518.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Motion approved warrants 6818.
Second. Motion by Tim, seconded by Chad, approved warrants from 68818.
6818.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So we're moving to mayor's report. We've had some discussions. I had another call on noise issues. It seems to be a common topic for us. I've asked Don if he could do some inquiries as to what maybe is happening in other communities, relative ordinances. I'm not sure if you've had any opportunity to do that, Don, but if you want to. Yeah, not yet. We heard it at our last meeting, we heard it, I think we've all heard, heard from constituents relative to this in some form or fashion. I'm not sure what actually can be done, but we're going to do some homework so we can let people know that there are some research on it and we'll get back moving forward, so.
Could we, since we just had a little time, could we take a few minutes and just help me get a sense of what you're hearing from folks? You know, is it downtown noise? Is it neighborhood noise? Is it vehicular noise? Is it partying noise?
The most current one I got was probably downtown motorcycle related. You know, as people are in the downtown area, that's probably the biggest one that I've heard to date. There are some neighborhood ones as well, you know, the downtown seems to get more of the attention.
I've heard quite a few neighborhood complaints about loud vehicles in neighborhoods, particularly really early in the morning, as people are heading after work, I guess.
Mine are motorcycles and cars during times when people are either in the park or outside a restaurant. It seems like everybody who's got a muffler or everyone's got a Harley-Davidson has to scream it as long as they can while people are outside so they can hold it down. And, you know, nobody's ever around and forcing it. That's what I hear.
It'd be interesting to know what the rules and the rates are on motorcycles and also. You know, I mean, typically you could define them as a business, you know, and if it occurs particularly, if it's a pattern, you know, then you could, just typically on Saturday nights in the downtown, you know, trying to get some long-term presence around there. I think Michael had, you had a long word.
That seems to have been resolved according to my, my neighbor who worked for that originally lost that complaint. But I mean, a lot of these are neighbor complaints that have just risen to the level of, I don't feel like I can go next door and tell my neighbor safely that their dog was barking all the time or their modified truck that has, you know, the rolling coal stack that's designed to be obnoxious. And, you know, if, if a garage puts a sticker on that kind of modified vehicle and makes it loud, I don't know that the city has it within its ability to direct the police to enforce that. Again, it's, it's a, it, the frustration that I think in exploring this, especially the vehicular noise complaints that I've gotten over the last couple of months, has been that we just don't really have the ability to, under city ordinances, enforce vehicular noise issues. We also don't want to get in the business of preventing people who, you know, are getting up early in the morning to go to work to have a loud truck from doing their, their work. So it's this thing of like, I think the best thing that we can do as people who are in the community is encourage people to be respectful of their neighbors as much as possible and not intentionally raise the noise level. But I will say that I wish that Josh Martin, who spoke last week, who, I have been working with him a little bit, and he did say to me that dispatch has been very, much more helpful. He's called a couple of times about persisting animal noise in the neighborhood and that he did want to, he did have positive feedback about that and felt like some of those issues have been resolved. So I think just when we're communicating, we do use the community policing resources we have. We have some break resources and I very much appreciate that they've been willing to knock on those doors when sometimes neighbors don't feel like they can talk to their neighbors anymore.
Don, one direction, do you think you'll be able, you mentioned there's a, there's a manager's blog or?
Yeah, I mean, there's a legal assistance talent test in municipal systems that I keep copies of everything. And then the email list of all managers and I can, you know, put that out, see if anybody has any success. It, we'll have to see what comes back. I'm a little apprehensive of how, how to do this, but you know, not get too far in people's grill, you know?
I think, I think that's a concern of all of ours.
We just got in the green belts, you know?
So, Don, on a similar note, I know a couple of years ago, we talked about having a, I don't know what color complaint log, but issue log or somewhere where someone could go and write that, you know, my storm drain keeps getting clogged. And then, you know, it would be, we would write in there, okay, we received this, we're going to work on it. And then, you know, as soon as it's fixed, put log that, okay, it's been, you know, resolved. Have we gone, gone anywhere with that or is that just like dead in the water?
I think we've gotten some comfort level with a app, a platform called C Click Fix, which is designed to allow folks to report in issues and us to reply that we've got it and then for the show that it's been fixed. We haven't yet got the whole team aligned on the rollout of that. So I think it might, might be delayed. The support staff fear was that they didn't, they're a pretty skeleton crew and they didn't want their workload to be prioritized reactively by the public, you know, and have them just be going scattershot all around the city. I think some other communities have, have had some experience with C Click Fix. It's showed that it's been helpful for public works. And I think, I think we can, you know, use some of Kristin's support in City Hall to can, you know, use some of Kristin's support in City Hall to help serve as a buffer between those calls that are coming, you know. So, most of them, a lot of it's just a communication shift. They come in now as calls and they get tracked that way and they would be coming in instead via this app, sometimes with really helpful information such as a photo.
I've just been seeing them a lot on, you know, front porch forum and Facebook a lot. And I think people are just frustrated that they had a way to reach out to someone and know that they're getting the person and someone's actually looking at what's really wrong that it would like cut down some of the frustration.
Yeah, I see some of that too. And they can always call or email us.
But it's a funny thing. People sometimes, I think, don't know who should I be calling? Maybe, you know, even though you could pick up and dial any of the numbers, right, but that may be stopping people. And really, they just want to be heard.
Yeah. I mean, just a couple of weeks ago, I got a complaint about the light, the wind turned the light up by the complex sideways a little bit and the people turning left on the one oh four couldn't see the light.
That happens a lot in town.
So they just didn't know who to reach out to. So, that's when I just say, oh, you really got to call the town or V-Trans.
There you go. Is there any way we can have that retacked in from the transit?
Mayor, you were going to also look into the panhandling issue, I remember a couple of weeks ago. How do you make out of that?
We've had multiple discussions on that. We brought a team together to come up with some, a plan to address it. Marty was involved with that significantly, Chief Taylor, Captain Hoag, Officer Weatherby, NCSS, and the Justice Center. The plans did not go as well as we had hoped. We have since reached out to the state's attorney's office to try to figure out an avenue towards working with, bringing these charges forward. There's been no solution to that yet, but it's definitely high on priority list. And Marty, you can feel free to jump in at any time. I have not, lately, I have not seen any activity, but that doesn't mean it's not happening.
Well, two days ago, in front of People's Trust Company, this person approached, a female walking out of People's Trust. She got into a cranberry Corolla-type vehicle. This was right down to the window and she had to roll up the window to get away from her.
Yeah, I think we hired our own counsel who's present at the next hearing to present these concerns to the court. You know, we even want to force to hire him.
I just want this guy out of here.
Yeah.
Out of here.
Yes. That's been tried, that's his return. So, it's, I think the team that's been assembled to address that has been working hard on this, but with little or, little or any success. So, we're going to look to the court system to try to rectify it. But it is, I would just share that as people come up to you and ask about it, because I have it all the time, that we are working through the process and we hope to have a solution in place by the end of the month. Marty, do you want to share anything?
I think you covered it. We have a plan in place. We have a support system in place for the individual. There's obviously some mental health issues going on there and there's a disconnect. And we're looking now for the court to hopefully impose some mandated support that he needs. And once he gets that and receives it, we will have this team in place when he comes out to hopefully support him. But he, he has over thirty misdemeanors. In the last year, he's had over thirty dismissed. So, our officers are doing what they're supposed to do. We just need to follow through with the process and make sure they do what they're supposed to do.
Keep it informed as we move forward. I have some other, let's, I might go back to item number ten. Mr. Weinstein's here. If you have that conversation, if you want to step up.
Hi, Jordan Weinstein. I'm representing the City Walk owners Association today. We received a violation notice regarding some unregistered vehicles. And I don't know what you have in front of you. Do you have the violation notice?
I do.
You do? Okay, good. On that violation notice, it was speaking to unregistered vehicles as being in violation of the Public Health and Safety Ordinance. Having spoken to a couple of city officials, I wasn't able to get sufficient relief, so I thought I'd bring this to the attention of the city council. It's my opinion, and I would like to try to convince the city council, that this is not the realm of health and safety. This is the realm of area improvement. And that, in this instance, and possibly other instances as well, this is a bending of the ordinance in order to make it suit the function of an area improvement ordinance. Speaking specifically to this situation, the notice of violation is in no way in keeping with the health and safety ordinance. The requirements of the health and safety ordinance are quite specific. And there are many lapses in this violation notice. So, it needs to be rewritten, at the very least, in order to be in accordance with city guidelines. But moreover, if we are to look to the purpose of the health and safety ordinance, it is to prevent unsafe conditions and properties that are run down and are causing the overall area to be run down. I don't believe that an unregistered vehicle on a private lot is a danger to health and safety. It is being broadly characterized as trash. Clearly, they're not trash. I think this is not in keeping with the letter or the spirit of the ordinance, the council, to reconsider the approach that city officials are taking with regards to these sorts of violations.
That is your request?
Yes.
Can I ask, what do you think of the Public Health and Safety Ordinance in general?
In general, it looks a little integrated. It looks as though it's in keeping with a city that is in greater distress than St. Albans is currently. Certainly, there are violations of health and safety ordinance within a block of this very building, but they're not coming to the attention of the health and safety officer. And I don't know why that is. Healing pain is one of the things that's featured in that. And I think that represents a much more serious threat to the safety of the people of St. Albans. Lead safety, it's well-known to all of us, but still, nothing happens on that. There are many other instances where there are real hazards, there are actual hazards. I think that we should stop trying to take health and safety ordinances and use them for beautifying the neighborhood, which, in essence, what area improvement is.
Do you also have any questions for Mr. Weinstein?
So you want us to take a look at the ordinance and see where, and you can help yourself just in that water dirt.
No, I've had it cold for three weeks. Thank you.
You want us to take a look at these, this ordinance and see where this particular violation fails, or do you want us to take a look at the ordinance in general and see where it either needs to be approved or modified?
Truly, I don't think the ordinance is so defective that it needs to be changed. I think what needs to be changed is the city's application of the ordinance. I don't think it's appropriate to try to use health and safety ordinances as area improvement ordinances. Now, if we want to talk about area improvement ordinances broadly, you have to keep the trash off your lawn. But that's fine. And, you know, we can have a committee to do that and we can write up some ordinances and create them specifically suited towards making sure that people don't leave messes. And some larger municipalities do that. Honestly, I think it's reasonable, but I think that the way it is being implemented by city officials is unreasonable. I mean, you know.
In this particular circumstance?
In this particular circumstance, and frankly, in some others too, well, I mean...
Had the ordinance read the way that you requested in section four of our paperwork as far as what shall be in the ordinance, or what shall be in the notice of violation?
Yeah.
Would you still have thought that this was problematic?
Frankly, it is not in keeping with the, with the intent of the ordinance.
Because of the fact that those are vehicles that were in fairly good shape and they were just, were not registered?
Exactly. Just by virtue of them being registered. For that matter, the ordinance doesn't even reference registered and unregistered. It just says automobiles. So, in theory, any automobiles on a property could be characterized as trash.
But are these vehicles owned by you?
No, they're owned by tenants. And honestly, this is not 61 Bank Street. That was wrong on the agenda. This is City Walk, which is the 32 White Street.
Okay, so, those folks, if this, if this violation was directed to those specific folks, would you have had a problem with this?
Hmm, probably. If it was under the health and safety ordinance, I'd have to object because it's not in keeping with the ordinance. The ordinance's intent is to prevent a blight. And these are not blighted properties just by virtue of the fact that some underdone registration on there. Frankly, I brought it to the attention of the city official. One of the plates off of this vehicle was stolen. I reported to the police department. I reported to the city official. I asked for a little bit of extra time in order to get some people moved along. Granted, extra time beyond the end of the month. I was honestly evicting some people, so moved them along. It was the rigidness of the enforcement of this, and I have to say at this point, misenforcement of this ordinance, that has me here sitting to you talking about the problem.
Okay, so if we took a look at the ordinance and then came up with what we thought were possible solutions, if any, that would satisfy you?
Again, it's not the ordinance that I think is the problem.
It's the application of the ordinance.
I think it's the violation notice and the way it's being implied. I think, I think the employees need different guidance than they're getting.
Do you know how long those cars were there for?
No, they were there for months, certainly. I mean, they're parked there. It is a parking lot. It is intended for cars.
Okay. Do you know how long they were not moved?
Not very much. Honestly, I didn't track it. I didn't think that was a critical factor. Months, probably. I know at least one of them was registered. The only reason it was listed as unregistered, not that this really matters with respect to the ordinance, is because someone stole the plate. So, I don't think an unregistered vehicle represents a threat to the health and safety of the city of St. Albans. I don't think, I don't think that's appropriate. I think the definitions are being misapplied. I think the employees need different guidance.
So, Don, I thought our health and safety ordinance did talk about the number of vehicles, because we did discuss that in depth at one point. I do remember that.
I don't think the final version talks about, let me speak to, if I can, your question and three or four of the comments that Jordan made, you know. The idea here is that an unregistered vehicle presents an attractive nuisance, has potential to leak hazardous fluids all over the place, and to the general public, represents something other than a motor vehicle that's used for transport, you know. Whenever you're writing an ordinance like this and you're directing enforcement staff, you can never anticipate every situation. You have to preserve some discretion. And generally, the directive, because of the high attractive nuisance that unregistered vehicles that never move present for fires and kids messing around in them, we cite for unregistered vehicles. And citing for unregistered vehicles for just the ordinance in place. Could the drafting be improved to specifically enumerate unregistered vehicles as a particular type of trash and identify why we think this is a public health and safety hazard? Fair enough. But nonetheless, this is how it's been deployed. There's a process in place here that doesn't show up in the ordinance that Jordan might not be aware of, but the public health and safety team meets weekly. We go through every set of violations that we pull them up on the TV. Marty captains the team and gives the enforcement staff guidance on where we need to lean in further and where we need to back off based on the circumstances. You know, could an additional week have been helpful here? Yeah, fair enough, you know. But that's also where the engagement process works, takes place, you know. And I believe in this instance, Jordan got in touch with Marty, began the appeal. And we would have adjusted it, but by that time, the cars had already been moved. And Jordan's end issue wasn't the specific facts of this. It was more the fact that we were out of the box that the ordinance provides, essentially.
Very much so.
And this, it's proper for this council to put us back in the box. That's what you do, right? You know, through the manager, to the staff. And if we have been overly broad, then please redirect us, you know. But I'd also suggest that this is the anomaly. Most unregistered vehicles that haven't moved for months look pretty rugged. And enforcement staff had a standard that they imply, which is unregistered vehicles that haven't moved in a long, in a long time, you know. And I think that's fair play. And if from time to time, somebody gets caught in the net, then we interact with them and help them get out of the net. We do that all the time. We regularly cut fines in half, put together plans to work with folks. Here, we didn't have the chance to do that because the larger issue was the business that we were conducting. I think it's proper to have that discussion.
Oh, may I speak? I believe that the notice of, the violation notice interferes with due process. I think that there are some rights associated with being a citizen in the city of Vermont who's been violated, in the city of St. Albans that's been violated. And I think it's missing some very important components. I pointed that out. I think that that is the very least change that needs to happen.
What are the due process violations?
Well, the due process violations, specifically, it violates ordinance in a number of different ways. It lacks the appropriate amount of time that is supposed to be granted. It lacks the notice that the person can appeal decisions. I mean, this is very specific to the city ordinance. And the city is written this way. We're expecting the people who live in the city to abide by the ordinance. Well, we have to also expect the city officials to likewise abide by the ordinance. These are requirements of the city ordinance and the city officials are violating their own ordinance. It's not appropriate.
So you believe that we haven't provided adequate notice and you would like the appeal process to appeal the violation?
I would like, I have submitted a, an appeal, an appeal letter. I've enumerated the flaws as I see them. There may be more, but at least, at the very least, there are four. There are four different sections that the safety notice fails to address. I'd like the safety notice to be adjusted to be in accordance with the ordinance.
So your issue is less with the ordinance itself, I think, than the notice you received?
The ordinance is fine. The application of the ordinance in an unreasonable way, we can debate that.
You had mentioned they have time to address the issue?
Yes. Health and safety ordinance calls for three days to address the issue. I think the notice says forty-eight hours. So, on its face, it's in violation of city ordinance. So, the violation notice is in violation of city ordinance. These are requirements. I mean, I'm not making this stuff up. I had to read it after I got frustrated with the way it was being handled. Do you have a copy of my appeal letter?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, I mean, it's all there. I don't, you have so many much more important things to deal with than this.
Jordan, can I just ask, so, there was never a final force. And when you did question the, that initial notice, there was an extension in the amount of time at the discretion of the officer, correct?
That's correct.
I'm understanding all the documents we have.
Right, right. I mean, I had a certain amount of time to respond with a, with a request for, for appeal. And it was only because of that tight timeline that I had to file my appeal so quickly.
It was the appeal timeline that was tight, not?
That pinched me. No, absolutely, not the appliance timeline. I thought that was reasonable. I asked for another week only by virtue of the fact that the problem's going to resolve itself by the end of the month. I just wasn't sure that it could happen. Now, point of fact, I could pass the fines on to the people who own the Now, point of fact, I could pass the fines on to the people who own the vehicles. I wasn't concerned about the fines as much as I don't want these ordinances turned into something that they're known. And right now, it seems like that is the case.
So just from my information, do you think, when you use the word abandoned or unregistered vehicles that have not been utilized for a period of time, an issue within the city of St. Albans?
I don't know. I honestly don't know enough about what the problems are in the broader cities and all those to be able to speak to, whether or not unregistered or disabused, abused vehicles. I think, for instance, a vehicle on its tires, that seems reasonable. A vehicle on blocks, that represents a real and present danger. A vehicle holding its fluids, not a problem. A vehicle leaking, obviously a problem. It's a subjective standard. If you apply the objective standard of unregistered, it's a pretty broad brush. What happens if someone has their Ferrari in the backyard, unregistered, in a garage? It's an absurd example, but frankly, it needs better...
Is your Ferrari in the garage?
Uh, I... I just think it needs better judgment. I just don't think health and safety ordinances should be used for the purpose of beautifying your neighborhood. Yes, I appreciate the fact that some vehicles that are unregistered can represent a hazard. I think it has to be taken in context. I think the city officials need some guidance.
Jordan, how did you know the appeal timeline if you didn't receive adequate notice of your right to appeal?
Well, I got my backup and I read all the ordinance.
You didn't get a copy of the ordinance with the...
No.
All you got was this picture.
I got that and two pictures of cars.
And you got your backup and said, "How do I fight this?"
I said, "You know, I better read up the rules and see what the real rules are." Discover the real rules aren't what this being told us. Would an average person do that? No. Would I really, realistically do that if I didn't think it was somewhat unreasonable? No. Asked for a little extra time. They didn't give me an extra week. I went, "Okay, I guess I'm going to see what the real rules are." And there I am, wasting your time.
Council, any other questions?
It's not a waste of our time, and it is important. So thanks for bringing it up.
Thanks very much.
Oh, Jordan, can I just ask you, it's no longer an appeal, right? Is it just?
Oh, no, that went away. Honestly, I take care of that stuff normally. I wasn't really looking forward to asking my tenants to move their otherwise found vehicles. That was the only thing that was happening suddenly.
So you wanted us to leave in moments and make...
I'm gonna withdraw the appeal. I don't have any grounds.
Good, thank you.
I would need some...
I open it up for help to comment on the, on this conversation. I know a number of people are here to share their thoughts, but I would like to comment on that.
I guess I would argue that it can be a health and safety issue with unregistered vehicles. I've had the experience of someone in our neighborhood with four or five unregistered vehicles and vans and campers, you know, that people were in and out of, suspected living in. So if it's not health and safety, I think there has to be some way to be able to regulate that.
Did you see these vehicles? Did you see pictures of them?
What's that?
Did you see the pictures of these vehicles?
No, I did not.
Okay. And then see if you think they're safe enough.
Yeah.
I guess I would, to that point, I think it can become a health and safety violation at any time. It just takes one individual to break a window and call in here for a night. But I think it can happen at any time, especially if it's marked, you know, it's been there for a while and people are aware of it, so.
And I will say, it has cleaned up. It was a long process, but it's, they're gone, so something worked in this instance.
Our next door neighbor, Phil Bonney, 19 Lincoln Avenue. Our next door neighbor, it's a two-family house, and there are four unregistered cars with flat tires. And in the back of the yard, it is an absolute junkyard. And the owner is in, I guess he lives in Essex, Rich Marshes, Marshes. And when we have a second floor apartment, and somebody goes up on our deck, a prospective renter, and looks over there, they're gone.
Impossible. Have you reported that, sir?
Yes.
We have, yeah.
The cars have been there over a year.
Oh, gosh, yes. And I guess we're seeing one side of the building. On the other side of the building, there are cars in a hump pack, both piled tires. But the cars on our side, every single one of them has flat tires and they don't work.
So I know for a fact that PHSO committee has that on their list and have extended fines, from what I understand, so.
Those fines aren't going to be paid.
They will be paid if you're going to sell the house at some point.
I think that, I thought, we thought the house was in repossession by the bank.
That may be the case, but will we put a lien on the property? So whoever buys it is going to have to deal with that lien. Typically, that's indicative of a bigger problem like this with the unregistered vehicles. We get a report on those. We go investigate. We find out that there's an absentee landlord. The lawn's not being mowed. There may be other public health and safety issues with the building. So Matt and his team will go out and investigate that. We've sent the letters. We've issued the fines, and it's a matter of just following the process now.
When does, how many fines can be accumulated before it comes to an end? That's just my question. When does it stop?
It's a process, due process. We'll put a lien on it. We'll continue. We've had some properties where they've stopped mowing the lawn. We've actually gone in and mowed the lawn and maintained it and continued the lien throughout the process. When the property, if it's in foreclosure, you have to follow that process and let it go through. And a new buyer will come in and deal with the fines. Typically, in that case, the new buyer may come in and talk to us and see what we will do to help them, you know, work with them on the fines. At that point, they get the message of how serious we are about this type of behavior and how they keep the property up.
An additional thing is, the neighbor raises dogs and they live in the house. One of them is on the front lawn, which is all dirt. But these animals are in the house. It's crazy.
Washing machines out back, five or six grills, piles of...
It's a real dump.
It is a...
There are things that you can do.
Potential health hazard.
There's things that you can do. You don't have to be here before us. There's a place up on Church Street you can go to. There's a corner up there, and you can do things affirmatively if you wanted to do that. That's, that's your goal.
What, we don't understand?
Well, you should talk, whoever your attorney is, you should talk to him or her, because there's things you can do.
I'd just like to say, I've been on, I've been serving as mayor for four months now. And this is probably the most, Marty's team that meets every Thursday at 1:30. Matt's a part of it. Chip's a part of it. I think this is probably one of the best that... I'm early in my career here, but it was one of the best things the city is doing to help clean up neighborhoods. And I'm sorry that it hasn't worked for your neighbor yet, but it has worked in many other areas. You know, we share the one on Federal Street. There's a great example. On Lower Newton is a great example. And it does take time. And if people have properties, and I know Marty has your neighbors on the list, but if there are other properties that people want him to be aware of, be sure to call City Hall and make them aware of them. My guess is more likely they have it on their list. I think there's 35, Marty, that you're tracking?
Yeah, at least. There's more now because of the lawn mowing. But to be honest with you, a number of, once it's brought to their attention, they engage with us and they can solve pretty quickly. There are, a lot of the ones that we're dealing with are absentee landlords and rental properties.
Yeah, rental properties.
Right, seem to be the majority of the main issues on the list.
We want the prime example. This is out of Diamond Street. And I think this has wiped out us the lines on Diamond Street, got us the property, and we will fix it up. I mean, you just drive up and down Diamond Street now. It's a totally different street than it was four years ago.
But there's only so much that we can do. We've gone as far as we can go. Now, if the property owner wants to go further and expend their money to do it, they can go to the court, and there's all types of relief they can get. But it's going to cost, you know, thousands of dollars for them to do it. The easiest avenue is to come here to the city. It may take a little while. But if they're reluctant to do that, or they want to move faster, there certainly is an avenue of approach that they can pursue.
One of the pushing pulls here is, on some level, you got a right to be a pig in your own house, right? You know, in this country. Until that crosses over and affects everybody else and becomes a public health and safety issue, you know. Private health and safety, we're not as concerned about. Health and safety is our bailiwick. But that's a pretty high bar before that happens, you know. Maybe you guys are getting there. We can take another look at that. There have been instances where it's been so acute that we have swept in with our team and addressed the public nuisance. We've swept in and the conditions were so rough that we evacuated the tenants that night. We brought in dumpsters and cleaned up property. Typically, when that happens, we're seeing rats crawling around it. We're seeing a smell. Matt, was there other triggers for that? I mean, rats and smell, anything else that would trigger that?
Autofire, safety issues, lack of smoke detectors, stuff like that inside the apartment.
That's definitely not the case with...
Yeah. There's no smell, but they're just...
The ironic thing is, I really like the tenant on the other side. We've actually had him not do work for it. He's kind of a hedges. I pay him more than he asked me for. But he's such a disorganized human being that he thinks he's going to fix all that crap in the backyard. He's never going to get it. And the cars? Oh, he thinks he's going to fix those too. But basically, he's a good guy, but he's not the owner. He's a tenant.
Anyone else? Like, I guess Mike Smith, you know, just from a taxpayer, a city taxpayer, I mean, Jordan's sitting here. I'm a property owner, landlord, and we have a written lease that there's no unregistered vehicles on the property. You don't work on the vehicles on the property. It isn't a shop. And I'm going to tell you that if you have one or two, the next tenant next door is going to find out. He's going to leave another one, and you're going to have three, four, five left there before something is done. And as far as I'm giving breaks on the fines, if these slum lords don't want to basically own up to their properties, I wouldn't be giving them any breaks. You know, the ones that are working with you, fine. But, you know, around town, you're dumping all this money into sidewalks and curbs and, you know, making the place look good. And you got people just, you know, taking and not putting back in. And if they want to be that way, I mean, and, you know, and I'm going to tell you, I'm sick of driving up Bank Street, seeing chicken wire and a cornstalk in the green space. You know, going up Bank Street on that street, you know. Before we know it, we're going to have cows parked, chained to the hitching poles up there grazing, for Christ sakes. But, you know, green space is green space. It's not a parking space. It's not a garden. It's not where the dumpsters are left out there for a week at a time. You know, if we're going to match what you're doing downtown, it's got to be brought all the way through in the neighborhoods and stuff. And it just, that's all, you know, like I said, to drive down and see chicken wire on green space and cornstalks and stuff is just, I, you know, like I said, it's... Hopefully, we get to a point where all these curbs and everything are going to make a difference with the green space and that we can get it back to, you know, lines or you're paying money to remove big tree stumps and everything else. And it's, you know, it's looking good, but, boy, you know, some of this other stuff needs to be done. And I feel for these people with these cars and the junks and everything. My question is, is he current on his taxes? You know, if not, pressure him to sell the place under a tax sale. You know, I don't know if he is or not, but...
Are most of the places you're talking about, Mike, rentals?
Uh, yes and no. I mean, you know, you got another one just across from Johnny Johnson's house, the little ranch there that they let that lawn grow, you know, up until probably they get a notice from Marty and stuff. You know, there's, some people just shouldn't own property, you know, basically what it comes down to.
We'll get that out.
When the city council starts handing out licenses for people who own properties, we're in a very different place.
But I'd just like to say this too. Ten years ago, there wasn't a person like Matt around. All right, so what he's doing now is something new, and it's working. It just can't work as quickly as most people want it to, but at least it's there now. And we've got someone who is enforcing this stuff and taking a look at it, bringing it to our attention, and bringing it to the proper authority attention. I just think that's a big bonus to what versus what we had 10 years ago, 15 years ago we didn't have.
I agree, you know, that definitely is needed. I think going forward though, I mean, I've renovated a few of the properties in the city, and there's got to be a game plan on how you're going to change those images from those apartment houses back to single families. And, you know, it's not going to be, it's not going to be easy. I mean, we're ahead of the curve. I call on Brooklyn, down in Brooklyn, oh my God, they ought to just tear down a huge number of houses down there just because no one's going to renovate those things.
Well, zoning is doing that with Chip. Chip's taking care of that. Matt's on rental properties. You're there, what, twice a year or once a year?
Every four.
Every four years?
Every, yeah.
That's the interior adjustment. That's not this.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, if the outside was like that, the inside, I'll leave like twice a year. I thought it was sooner than four years.
But it is working. We've got examples throughout the city where we've done it. On Federal Street, there was an issue down there at a home. We engaged the property owner. He had a building permit to do some work that had been three or four years old. He finished the work finally. He removed the garbage from his lawns. We're working with him on Greenbelt Restoration as part of the sidewalk project that's going on. Matt, I think Matt has some statistics of, in the last year, of what we've done for...
Yeah, I ran the numbers. Year to date, we ran, we've issued 101 of those notices that you have in front of you. Twenty-five of them were car violations. This is the first time we're here, so I kind of think that it's a great thing that we have. And it just starts the conversation to what we can do. It's not set in stone, the 48 hours. What I do is, once I issue it, they have a complaint that I can't take care of. I forward it to Marty. Marty negotiates with them, and we go from there. I think that everything that we do works really smooth. And again, 101 known violations, and we got one that came back.
The challenge is with the vehicles, for example, and I understand where Jordan's coming from. But in the neighborhoods, the residential neighborhoods, when you have that happen at one house, and then all of a sudden, you've got an apartment house two doors down that they start doing it, and then all of a sudden, you've got a whole block that you're dealing with. So we're trying to get ahead of the curve and deal with it to...
In this particular circumstance, it was a parking lot, though, right?
It was a parking lot, but it's a residential area. There's also a vehicle down there that's parked there, taking up two spaces with three flat tires. At some point, we would hope surprise would take over and...
Had he had these in a garage, it would be a...
Right, right. And as far as accommodating, I think this particular ticket was issued in May 14th. We gave him until June 1st, once he called. We gave him until June 1st to take care of the issue. A month or two before that, he had, his neighbor's street had fallen on his property. We went in and cleaned it up out of his parking lot. So the city has a lot of resources that we can be very accommodating. But it's a two-way street also. We would expect them to take some pride in the property and hopefully keep it that way.
I think we should all keep in mind as well that it's also in the spirit of the ordinance to prevent health and safety situations. So you actually want to deal with that car before its tires are flat, and you want to deal with that car before it's leaking. Using those as a definition of when a car, or when a situation should be dealt with, it's already too late. And so that's what staff are dealing with when it comes to the registered car issue.
If I have a son living with me on Grand Street who has a DWI, and I take his car away from him, and he doesn't get it registered because he's got to wait the year before he can drive again, it becomes an unregistered car. Am I going to get a notice of violation? I don't think I should. Why is that different than Jordan's? You think I'm going to keep a car there that someone will let someone crawl into or smash the window or slash the tires without fixing it?
Well, I think we at least need to have the safety order being started the conversation.
And I think that any ordinance that's going to take away the rights of an individual to have any personal property on their property needs to be that specific.
I guess I would look at that as, if Jordan had done anything down there, if there was four or five of them sitting there, and he doesn't live there, I think, you know, there's a difference... a difference when you're living the property and you got one there versus having a rental and you just let it go and just let it pile up down there.
The ordinance has addressed that, yeah, but...
But I think there's a difference at that point.
Yeah, I agree.
I would argue that there's a difference between a general public parking lot which moves down there versus a driveway.
Well, that's not a general public parking lot down there. That's a, that's a parking lot that belongs to that, that...
To the whole.
Yeah, to that community. So that's not a, it's not a public parking lot. It's a private parking lot.
You know, I, yep. Enforcement officer looks at the totality of the experience and makes a call.
Yeah, this was like, well, like you said, you know, over 100, one bad one?
Yeah, you know...
I don't even know if this is a bad, I wouldn't call this a bad one. That was a, that was a bad set of words I just used, but...
No, but I, you know, I think this is, this is that pitch that's on the outside of the strike zone, you know? And, you know, I know Jordan's comments about the form are well taken. That's, that's an easy fix. That's what we do day in and day out, you know, is to make sure that we're clearly communicating what we want them to do. And that feedback is helpful. I don't, you know, we could tweak the ordinance to make it clear that one of the characteristics that leads a vehicle to being regarded, being regarded as trash is its unregistered nature. But it's not, you know, that in itself is probably the only thing, you know, so...
Such as but limited, not limited to, or...
Yeah, you know, I just, I don't think we can write this ordinance to get that specific without, you know, this, this thing's rock star, you know? This, in terms of ability to achieve its intended results, there's no bylaw or ordinance that we've enacted in the last 10 years that has affected this thing.
But as of a challenge, yeah.
But this is the tool that we use to make sure that the community's safety, health, you know, those improvements that he alluded to, this is the tool we use, right?
Yeah, I mean, the fine line, but, you know, what's health and safety, and then what's community betterment, you know? And that's a part of what the enforcement officer uses the totality of the experience to evaluate on some. And it depends on a whole risk of a bunch of factors, you know? Is it owner occupied? Is it one vehicle in a driveway that's five years old? Or is it five vehicles in a shared parking lot that are 15 years old in rough condition, you know? So, you know, look, we, we got everything we wanted on day one. We got the cars moved for day 14, you know, when Jordan came in. For us, it was game over. We were ready to move on and, you know, get back on the same side of the equation, you know, so...
Well, and if nothing else, it generates conversation between the vehicle's owner or the landlord and the city. And like, for instance, in the example that Tim mentioned about, you know, he had a son that had a DWI, I'm sure if he approached the city and said, "My car was not registered because my son's had a DWI," just explain the situation, and then with the understanding that he notifies the city when that, that has all gone away and the car is registered again, I mean, I think it just generates conversation.
I said, "If" I had a son that had a DWI.
If, yeah.
I'll give you an example.
Don't care, son. It's not...
How's he doing with...
Couple things, Matt, you had to get up.
Nope, I'm good.
You're good. Peter?
Peter Shigai, city resident, and I'm also a landlord in the city. I would agree quite a bit with Mike about, I do put in my leases that there's no unregistered vehicles in the yard and no working on the vehicles in the yard. But I think if you go throughout St. Albans, you're gonna find a lot of places, and you just have to drive the streets, and you'll find a lot of places where I think this not only is, I'm not sure that a lot of it is a health and safety issue, but I think a lot of it is a quality of life issue for the neighbors. So, and a, an effect on the value of your home. So at what point do we start enforcing the ordinance when someone's gonna sell their home and you're bringing people in to look at your home, and they're looking at next door, and you've got cars on the front lawn full of garbage because it's been sitting there all winter, all year long? I mean, at what, at what point do we enforce that? An ordinance is only as good as the enforcement, right? So, you know, I think a lot of them are not safety issues. I think it's a quality of life for people that have to live next door.
Keith Carlton, 41 Lincoln Ave. And everything I've heard tonight, I, you know, I agree with. I think the ordinance in and of itself is working. I think it's a good mechanism for the city to move forward. As many people said, it at least starts a conversation. It begins the communication. And with anything, getting 100% compliance on anything is unrealistic. So at least if you get, I mean, the first one you said, right? To me, that's pretty, that's pretty amazing. But, and if there is a situation, as long as the homeowner, landlord, whoever it is, is being contacted, there is a built-in mechanism. There is an appeal process as well. So even in the situation where, you know, maybe, you know, this one's right on the line, you know, the landlord, the homeowner can avail him or herself of an appeal process. And if those people are willing to do that, I think the council would be amenable to what's being said. Not that the ordinance needs to be scrapped, or it's being misapplied, or it's serving some other interest, you know? It's moving the city forward and, as I said, not really infringing upon people's rights. I think it's a positive thing moving forward.
Anyone else?
John Casson, I would just say, I'd say a couple of things. I'm gonna ask a question, you know, in general, I'm not in favor of the city kind of being more involved in my business. You know, I, I think that some of this, so, that's just kind of, that's kind of my frame of mind, but...
You have a district of libertarianism.
Yeah, yeah, quite a bit. But, see, and I, the question is, how long can I wait before Marty comes and mows the lawn? It's just, you know, between my wife telling me to paint the house and mow the lawn, I don't really need Marty calling me. I think that a couple, a couple of things, I think that me as a landlord, having the leverage of the ordinance to be able to say to a tenant, "That's a problem," is helpful. And so I think that's kind of maybe lost on Jordan, but I think it is, it is a helpful thing. I think there's a difference, Tim, between me having an unregistered vehicle in the back of my yard where it's not an eyesore, and one kind of right in the middle of the community, or a couple right in the middle of the community that people can see. That, that lot is, you know, it's a, you know, it's an outside lot that everybody can see, so I think that's a little bit different. And I think that, to, I think Peter's point, as far as I know, he doesn't have any control over my investment account, but if I'm his neighbor, I'm, I'm his neighbor, and he's got a dump on one side of me and a dump on the other side of me, he does have a big impact on what for most people is their biggest investment, or maybe their biggest investment, that's their home. So I think having the ability to say to people in the community, "You need to, you need to straighten stuff up a little bit because it's having an impact on your neighbor's property values," is kind of an important thing.
I guess, John, being in insurance, I'd ask him on the, one thing is when a lot's full of unoccupied cars or whatever, and you get an audit by your insurance company, and they come in and they like, there's your problems, and they list them all out, or else you lose your insurance policy, you know, type of deal. So, I mean, it's just basically, you know, it comes down to that where, you know, you don't want the government in your business, but the private business is gonna get in it and tell you, you're gonna lose an insurance policy, you know, if you don't obey these, you know, you know, the audit type deals. And I've been through them, you know? And they get picky and picky because they want the premiums and they don't wanna pay out, you know, at that point. But to have your property that you invest and put all your money into, and that's your one thing that appreciates over your lifetime, and then have someone next door just run that down, that, you know, you gotta reverse your taxes. Tax them more and give the guy that has a nice place less, you know? But that isn't the way it works, you know?
Someone's gotta determine that the way you operate your household and your property is the way that people should operate their household and their property, and that's the fine line that we ride here. Just like Dominic said, people can be dirty people, and that's the way they live. And courts say that that's the way they live.
Yes.
And you really have to show that there's some diminution, not, even something more than that, there's some type of nuisance to you before they're gonna say, "You have to do something." I have landlord clients all the time, show me pictures of how their tenants are living. I say, "You can't have a victim for that, 'cause that's the way they live." You can't make them live the way you live, the way I live.
Tim, I live next door to White's, and the people didn't, they, they didn't include rubbish, and they, they didn't paper rubbish. They filled the basement full with garbage bags, with the rats.
Yeah, I don't, I don't doubt it.
So we can do something about that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a valid.
Good conversation. Do you have any comments for this? I just wanted to backtrack, just so people know, Mike, you made a comment about trash containers being left on the curb for extended period of times. The council and Dominic are having conversations about how to address some of that in terms of a garbage ordinance, I guess is what it would call. So that is under discussion. It's something that we as a, we as a group in the city are looking at as well.
We're in good shape with that. We got a, a draft that's ready for some input by the haulers, and should we go forward to council very quickly?
Mike?
One other question more towards winter plowing, and with the size of these lots and families with multiple cars and so forth, is there any vision down the road how you're gonna handle a snowstorm and how parking or vehicles on the streets are, or is there designated areas where they can go and then, you know, as far as with the, with the vehicles, or you're gonna alternate, you know, streets or whatever? I mean, you know, Burlington has the flashing lights when, when, you know, you need to get off the streets or whatever. Is it, I mean, it seems like that's where our problem becomes, the green belt, and they start parking on the green belt during the winter.
Marty, you wanna speak to that a little bit, or...
Yeah, we've discussed it. We, we've got an ordinance now that runs beginning of December through the end of April for a snowman. We've opened up our lot, we've, the municipal lots for them. We've also, when we issue passes to the municipal lot, they alternate on the sides of the lot so the plows can get in and plow. We've, anytime there's residential parking, they, they're required to move them every 24 hours in order for the plows to get through. There may be a need down the road to step it up and do total ban and have them go into lots so we can get in and do streets, but at this point, it's worked for us. Alan feels it's worked for us. We haven't towed any vehicles or anything, so, again, that's his last resort.
You know, I think, just to build on that a little bit, when we've done the green belt reclamation in a handful of instances where folks clearly didn't have the room to park on, on site, we've issued them placards that they hang from their rearview mirror and given them the right to park on the street, provided that they move it every 24 hours. To the extent that that case by case wasn't enough and we had to go citywide, that's certainly something that we can do, is allow more on-street parking and require that you move every 24 hours. But we've found that it's really very site-specific and neighborhood-specific, and if we open that up citywide, thus far, I think, you might get some unintended consequences, but if we just do it property by property, neighborhood by neighborhood, we can kind of get a custom solution for them. But if folks feel like it's not working, we're certainly open input.
I'd like to wrap this discussion up. Thank you all for coming in to talk about this. And once again, I commend Chip, Marty, and Matt for their work on the public health and safety ordinance. I think it's, as I said earlier, I think it's been a great addition to what the city's doing to improve neighborhoods. Thank you all for coming in. Last thing on the agenda, just to wrap up, may I record other information? I just wanna thank Kate for the block party on May 28th, which was a huge success. We talked briefly about the potential for it maybe becoming a yearly event. I don't know if Kate's up for that or not, but it proved to be a great community event, and I thought it was rough. And I think the thing that I noted was, it wasn't just your ward. It was a community-wide, all wards, attendees, there was no restrictions, but I thought that was, that was a nice job.
One of your neighbors on February, Court said, "Hey, you're not in this ward." And I said, "Well, Kate invited me, so it's okay."
Tim, we did that before, too. When did we do that, Dominic? Right here on the square on Main Street. What event was that? We did that.
That was when we celebrated the Streetscape, wasn't it?
Was it the Streetscape?
Yeah, we had a community block party to celebrate the Streetscape, and then Tammy Franco's done on...
We just, we just had one week ago Saturday at Food City Green, and it went really well.
So, thank you for your efforts on both of those, and thank you, Tammy. My thing was, I just wanted to take a moment to plug my photo competition. If you haven't seen it, Marty and I have spoken to the co-op about what we can do for the 100th anniversary. We've talked about a number of different things. This is one we're kicking off, which is a photo competition. We hope to, with the help of the Messenger, Chip, and social media, Ben and Jerry's and Bordeaux Brothers, we hope to bring in about 75 is my wishful thinking about photos, and then we will have a reception where people can vote on them, and then they get blown up and put in the park for four to six weeks. So any, and the focus is agriculture, so any agricultural photos will be submitted, and then we'll have a competition. So I think it's gonna be a great social event if we get pictures in.
What's the deadline?
Deadline for the pictures is June 30th, and then the reception is scheduled here at City Hall for July 12th. So, that was one. Marty, we're moving forward on a potential antique tractors parade for the co-op some point in the fall. And then there's some discussions with that, with the potential for having some milk cans painted and scattered around the downtown, so... Still looking for a cow? Still, there's a word out on the fiberglass caddles that were used down in the marketplace. What we'd like to have a conversation with Dom and others is potentially have it painted and have it out here on the front, where people can get their picture taken and just recognize the fact that the co-op has been here for 100 years, and then there's a few banners that would go up and conjunction of that. So, a number of different things in the works, and I think, I think it'll be fun to recognize the co-op for that going on. That was pretty much what I had. I don't know if anyone wants to add for other business or other comments.
I just really quickly wanted to thank Alan Rattoy and Brian Burns for getting the, their, some big hot holes developed on Smith Street around the manhole covers, and they got those pads pretty fast, so I appreciate that.
Tim, anything?
I thought I noticed, Chip, Mike, did I notice a couple maple trees as part of the Streetscape?
You mean planted this year?
No, but planted.
As part of the Streetscape downtown, yes, there were maple trees.
I was wondering how, how we're gonna handle those 10 years from, 15 years from now. I was just, I was having a conversation with my wife the other day when we walked by one, and she says, "Is there a maple tree?" And I said, "Yeah, that is." We have a couple maple trees on our property that are...
Yeah, they grow tall. You know, I think, when it comes to downtown trees, their useful life is probably gonna be shorter than a green, greenbelt tree. When it gets to the point where it's too big and it's blocking all the signs and it's hitting up against the buildings, we're, we're gonna remove the tree and we'll plant a, we'll plant a new tree.
Okay.
Yeah, none, none of those trees are, are gonna be allowed to take, the trees are there for us in the downtown. We're not there for the trees, and, you know...
One more thing is, Kate, I don't know if, we had mentioned this since the last council meeting, but did you see the picture of the truck going down, going down Walden Street and the jackknife?
Yeah.
Did you see it?
Yeah.
Did you see it?
Where was the picture?
It was right af, it had to be days after the meeting we knew I brought that up, that was posted on Facebook of a truck that got directions to go down Walden Street, and it had jackknife on the top of Walden Street, right by the, right by the insurance agency. right by the, right by the insurance agency.
Yeah.
And it was one heck of a mess. And how that truck ever got there, I don't know. But boy, it started to become a problem, yes.
I just dumped y'all that there's been initial complaints on Mason Street, trucks going down Mason and Walden. I have no problem having conversations with the manufacturers in the industrial park, Marmalade. But the key to sort of getting to the bottom of this is get the truck name, find out what name is on the side of the truck. And then we can pinpoint where their destination is and have the conversations about what route they use. But until we have actual names of the trucks or the company trucking, there's not much we can do until we...
We have weight load limits, don't we? Do we have weight load limits? Do those trucks like, go over that, exceed that limit? I don't know much about it.
It's hard to measure because PD would have to get a set of scales.
Okay.
So one 18-wheeler did go down South Elm the other day with these speed bumps and I don't think he's coming back down. I would also, just on Michael's point, I, as I said earlier, I've only been on the job for four months or whatever it is. And I've gotten a number of, not a lot of complaints, but multiple complaints on a variety of topics. And I would commend staff on, I mean, I forward that information to Chip or Marty, Dom, and these issues are addressed immediately. I mean, there's, it's not, I don't get a follow-up email that I never heard from you or how, what are we doing on this? Alan, Marty, whoever, Chip, Tom, I mean, these things are addressed quickly. And from this position, I thank you, Kristen's excellent. So the whole staff is excellent in responding to concerns of the citizens of St. Albans. So I think that should be recognized. Thank you for your work on that, all of them.
Thank you.
Mary, you got anything?
Just, speaking of speed bumps, you got any complaints?
I did receive one regarding North Elm. And wanting to know why.
It's probably, probably 75% of the cars now do not even slow down for them. But the difference is, is probably the traffic has been halved. So I think it's helped in that way. So the people that fly over them are going to fly over them, whatever. But there's a lot less traffic on the street, which is helpful with the parks, so.
That, yeah.
I have a question.
On my street, what I've noticed is it's slowed down a lot of cars. But maybe they were the ones that weren't speeding anyway. And like you say, the others, they just fly over them no matter what. So I've had kind of 50/50, some like them, some don't.
So my question was, how did North Elm get to the point of getting dips? Where was that decision made? Is the question that was posed to me?
They start at Lake Street and they fly. They just gun their vehicles because it's a clear shot right to Pearl.
Right, I know, but did this recommendation come through the safety committee?
Yes.
So it's been reviewed through the committee?
Right through the public safety committee, yeah. I don't know if the council took action on it, they were certainly moved on it.
It's been a year-long process. So the speed dips started on Stebbins as like a pilot project to see how it dips. So it cut down on traffic and the number of speeding violations. So that was kind of like the pilot project.
One suggestion I have heard that might be worth considering is to paint the street where they are. Because if you don't know that they're there and the sign is right where the dip is, it's sort of too late to slow down. But if the street had some striping on it, it might just catch your eye, I think, before that sign does.
Tim, anything?
Yeah, I got six things.
There goes my, you just shot my, I can't... They're quite points.
They're all quick, they're all quick. Building in Hope Park, there still is no T-111. I was hoping someone would put a sheet of T-111 on the side of the building on the east side. It's cement board that looks like T-111 and I have to paint. So if someone can put one up there, I can paint it to look like the rest of the building. So it's right now, you can just see the house rack. I had asked Alan if Cedar Street has the double yellow lines as you get to the end of the street to kind of keep... So cars that are getting to the end of South Elm, because there's a curve on both sides, they kind of hug towards the middle so they don't get close to the curb. And then anyone trying to pull on, it jams everything up. So I don't know if we can put a white line or the double yellow line and kind of push them back over so when they come to a stop, they're on their side of the street. Because as you're coming, you won't notice that, oh, I don't have room to pull in here until you're three quarters of the way and then you're blocking traffic on Lake Street.
South Elm, is that you?
That's South Elm, corner of Lake. The, I received, someone called me the other day about, they received a notice that they were in violation of zoning because they, I think they had received material... So what my assumption is, someone has seen a pile of stuff in their driveway to do construction, but they don't have a construction permit. So the problem was, it was five days. So he said, you know, "What if I received this on Friday after I left for vacation? Same thing I said the last time and I wasn't home for a week. Now I'm going to start getting fines because I haven't replied to this within five days and I haven't, you know, I haven't received it." He wasn't there to receive it. So he was, I think he took care of it today, hopefully. But I don't know if we can bump that up to the 14 like we did for the...
It is 14. The first letter of inquiry gives you seven days. And then the notice of violation gives you another seven days. And even then, if you find out that it's not an issue, we won't even incur the, we won't incur the fines anyway.
Yeah, that's like setting, just because he said he hasn't done anything. He wasn't planning on doing anything until he got it. But he just had the money, so he wanted to buy the stuff. So it's seven days?
He wouldn't have gotten fined for being on vacation. That wouldn't have happened.
He would have to prove, he would have to send a call.
He would have had to take us on his vacation. We would have had to meet here during the vacation. Yes, yeah, exactly.
So as long as there's swiggle from there, I won't get...
Right, yeah.
I checked, the other day I was driving and I turned down and just noticed that a curb at the top of New Inage just mutilated. So it's like, again, there's hardly any curb there, so I don't know if we can do anything about it.
Buy that Newton lower up.
So as you turn on the lower, the trucks, they jump that curb all the time. So I don't know, it might seem wise to next, if we replace that again just to put granite there, maybe it'll hold up a little better. I don't know, I don't know if it's the plowers or the trucks, but it just looks awful as you turn down. Kicking off on the mayor's, the museum opened up their farming in Franklin County exhibit. It is really good. I did tell my wife I was going up there. She did remind me I'm not a farmer. But it is a great exhibit, so if anyone gets a chance, go up and do that. Parks Patrol, A+, I've seen them around quite a bit, so thank you. On the segue.
Look, Kate?
Yeah.
I got none.
Ready or set? Michael? Tim?
Four minutes?
Dom?
We're good.
Any motion to adjourn?
Subtle.